Welcome, this is the November Monroe Township Board of Education meeting. I have a roll call, Ms. Allen? Oh, wait, we have to do pledge allegiance, I'm sorry. I missed.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Individual.
Now, Ms. Allen, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Here.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted July 23rd, 2025, and November 12th, 2025, at all schools, on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality. Thank you. You're welcome.
Close session resolution, whereas the Senator Byron M. Bayer Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10, colon, four dash six, et cetera, the Act provides that the Monroe Township Board of Education may hold an executive session from which the public is excluded to discuss matters that are confidential or are one of the nine subject matters listed, Section 12B of the Act, and whereas that, the Board hereby declares that its discussion of the following subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the Board shall go into executive session to discuss the following items. Additional items may be determined and announced as needed. Item number one, pending or anticipated litigation and matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. Two, matters involving employees and terms of their employment and contracts. Three, HIB investigation involving students. Be it further resolved that said discussion may be disclosed to the public when reasons for discussing and acting upon it in closed session no longer exist. Action may be taken at, on any of the items stated above.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes, so for the members of the public, the Board is going to retire to executive session for approximately one hour. The Board will not be taking any action in executive session. To the extent that any action is going to be taken by the Board, it will be done out here in the sunshine for all to see. Additionally, in view of the fact that there are several conflicts amongst the Board members as it relates to the topic of Dr. Chanley's employment, to the extent that we're going to be discussing that in closed session, it's required that we pass a resolution invoking the doctrine of necessity. So, and we've done that here, I believe, the last two or so Board meetings. With that in mind, I think we should first take a roll call vote on the motion to go into executive session, after which time I will read the doctrine of necessity resolution for the Board then to vote on, and then from there, we can go into executive session.
No motion.
Second.
And Mr. Zeichner and Mr. Piero, thank you. Okay, Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Mr. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I will now read the resolution for the doctrine of necessity. Whereas Dr. Shari Chanley serves in the capacity of superintendent for the 25, 26 school year, and whereas the Board must consider personnel and litigation-related matters concerning Dr. Chanley's employment, and whereas upon review of the various conflicts of interest of the current Board members, it has been determined that seven of the members have conflicts of interest pursuant to the New Jersey School Ethics Act, and whereas pursuant to policy 0163, when a quorum of the Board has conflicted interests, the doctrine of necessity may be invoked in order to allow conflicted Board members to participate and vote only when the Board of Education has fewer non-conflicted Board members than are required pursuant to statute to take action, and whereas when invoking the doctrine of necessity, the Board shall state publicly that it is invoking the doctrine of necessity with the reasons for doing so in the specific nature of the conflicts of interest, and whereas the Board policy further provides that it shall read the resolution invoking the doctrine of necessity at a regularly scheduled public meeting, post the notice of the resolution for 30 days, and provide the School Ethics Commission with a copy of the resolution, and whereas the New Jersey School Ethics Act, NJSA 18A 12 dash 21, at SEC, was enacted by the New Jersey State Legislature to ensure and preserve public confidence in school Board members and school administrators, and to provide specific ethical standards to guide their conduct, and whereas the School Ethics Commission, excuse me, has provided guidance regarding the invocation of the doctrine of necessity when a quorum of the Board of Education is not available because members of the Board of Education have conflicts of interest on a matter required to be discussed and voted upon, and whereas the Board intends to have discussions concerning Dr. Chanley, whereas members of the Board have conflicts of interest that would prevent their participation and vote on the matters related to Dr. Chanley are as follows. Carmen Alvarez, Gail DePain, Peter Piero, Usha Sharma, and Charles Zeichner are involved in litigation with Dr. Chanley. Sarah Aziz was previously involved in litigation with Dr. Chanley. Kate Ratner's husband, David, is a teacher employed by the Board. Whereas, as a result of the foregoing, the Board does not have a quorum to discuss, consider, and vote on matters related to the superintendent's employment and related litigation, and the Board's counsel and the Board have determined that it is necessary to invoke the doctrine of necessity. Now therefore be it resolved that the above paragraphs are incorporated by reference, it be it further resolved that the doctrine of necessity is hereby invoked with respect to the Board's deliberation of and any public votes related to Dr. Chanley, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution, having been read at a public meeting of the Board on November 19th, 2025, be posted in accordance with the Board's standard procedures for not less than 30 days, and that the Board Secretary reflect the same in the minutes of the meeting, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be provided to the School Ethics Commission. Is there a motion and a second? Oh, you have to make a motion?
Second.
Any questions? Discussion? Okay, Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Going into closed session, we are going to need a, well, Board member appointed as the Secretary for our closed session.
Ms. Alvarez?
Just a motion and a second, please.
A motion and a second?
Ms. Alvarez?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Who would like to take the minutes? Oh, okay. I wanted to ask, wanted to double check and make sure somebody else didn't want to jump up and do it.
That's exactly right.
So, you know, Ms. Alvarez has been doing it for a while, maybe somebody else wanted to too. Nobody does? Okay.
Ms. Alvarez? Yep.
I'm going to give the approval of the minutes. Opening the meeting back again. Approval of the minutes, Public Board of Education meeting, October 15th, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call? That's it? Closed session meeting, October 15th, 2025.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Board members report.
We need to vote. Point of order.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying on the portion where conflict exists.
Okay, thank you. Now we have our student representative, who is on his own tonight.
Hello, everyone. So for our monthly report, we'll get started with Berkeley Brook Elementary School. Berkeley Brook held its annual pre-K and kindergarten pumpkin patch on Friday, October 24th. Students selected their perfect pumpkins and decorated them in their classrooms. The school thanked the Berkeley Brook slash Brookside PTA for the generous donations of pumpkins and decorations. Berkeley Brook celebrated Halloween on October 31st with two parades and multiple class parties. Students were excited to participate in their classes, parade, and dress in costumes. The school thanked all families who joined the Halloween celebrations. Berkeley Brook partnered with residency, a local active adult community, to write letters of thanks and appreciation for military veterans. The letters and thank you notes were shared with military veterans and their families during Regency's annual Veterans Day breakfast. During American Education Week, families were invited to visit Berkeley Brook to observe their children's learnings. The school thanked all families who visited this week and who will join later in the week. Now next, we have Mill Lake School. Mill Lake School kicked off the month with its first annual game night, which was an overwhelming success. Also, FBLA from the high school participated, sent volunteers, I was there myself.
Nice.
More than 200 families attended for an evening of fun connection and community. Students and families played classic board games such as dominoes, twister, checkers, bingo, and there was a Chick-fil-A truck and an ice cream truck as well. These games supported the development of executive functions skills as part of the school-wide initiative embedded into daily instruction. Several Mill Lake students were recognized by the Monroe Township Basketball Association. The six and seven-year-old students were part of the three Monroe teams that won district championships this summer for the first time in township history, that three teams earned this honor. Mill Lake thanks athletes Gavin Zamba, James Van Higgin, Jason Vega, Nicholas Stenhauser, and Colton Sizak. The school community celebrated Veterans Day through Ms. Papadandre's annual program. The first graders from Ms. Myers and Mrs. Thott's classes were presented to veterans from Monroe Township American Legion Post 522 on November 13th. Students shared facts about the holiday, expressed heartfelt gratitude, and performed patriotic songs including "Spirit," "Redetention," of NATO alphabet. Halloween at Mill Lake had the theme "Fairy Tales Dreams Do Come True." Staff dressed as their fairy tale characters, and students participated in two festive parades around the campus. The school thanked all volunteers who helped make the day special. During American Education Week, families were welcomed into classrooms to observe teaching and learning. On November 24th, Mill Lake will launch its annual mac and cheese domino challenge, collecting unopened boxes of macaroni and cheese for local food pantries through May 15th. This initiative connects two seasons gratitude and honoring, while giving students the chance to design a school-wide domino display before donating foods to families in need. In December, the school looks forward to Mill Lake slash Woodland PTO Holiday Shop, the annual sing-along, and Gingerbread Day. Mill Lake School continues to close out 2025 with confidence, purpose, and pride as a place for children to learn and grow. Now moving on to Woodland School. Students and staff successfully completed the NJSLA field test in preparation for the spring. Woodland students and staff supported Breast Cancer Awareness Month by wearing pink and donating to the Mama Mayor Foundation. Students celebrated Halloween on October 31st, Friday, by wearing costumes and participating in interactive classroom projects and celebrations. Ms. Herman and Mrs. Fleming coordinated the annual Woodland Wounded Warrior Walk Along with a fundraiser. An assembly was held for veterans on November 11th. The SEL and Sunshine Committees coordinated staff thankful programs for the professional team. Fourth and fifth grade classrooms celebrated American Education Week from the 17th of November to the 20th of November. Woodland held the first marking period extravaganza to celebrate students' growth. Students earned Growth Punch Card Raffle tickets for responsible decision-making and self-management skills. Tickets were included in the extravaganza prize, bin drawings before Thanksgiving recess. Now we have Apple Garden School. Apple Garden students completed a wide variety of classroom projects and activities to honor veterans. Code Zero Club Code and Arc Tag ran weekly at Apple Garden School. Mrs. Patel and Ms. Shepherd, both fourth-grade teachers, sponsored a group of fourth and fifth-grade girls in the Girls on the Run program. Girls on the Run empowered students to lead a mostly and physically, and physically healthy lives. Participants participated in running a 5K race scheduled for this Sunday. The school wished all Apple Garden Girls on the Run participations for good luck. The PTA-sponsored book fair was scheduled for Thursday, November 20th, and Friday, November 21st. The Principal's Book Club for Harry Potter and the Sorcerer's Zone is scheduled on Google Meet for Tuesday, November 25th. The first pep rally of the year is scheduled for Wednesday, November 26th, at 9:30 a.m. Apple Garden School Winter Concert is scheduled for Wednesday, December 10th, at 7:00 p.m. in the Monroe Township High School PAC Center. The school extended, the school extended a happy Thanksgiving holiday to all families celebrating. Now we have Oak Tree. Oak Tree celebrated American Education Week in the November, in November with parents and guardians invited to participate in school activities. The PTA Scholastic Book Fair was held on November 18th yesterday and November 19th today. The Totally Vocals Assembly was scheduled for November 21st. The first One Book, One School event of the year was scheduled for November 25th. Mrs. Dinsmore will read the same story to all Oak Tree students throughout the day, focusing on developing executive function skills. December activities included 10 Days of Oak Tree Spirit, a decorating contest, and Theme Spirit Days. Third-grade students participated in Native American Day on November 24th, routing, rotating, sorry, through activities to learn more about indigenous cultures. Now we have the Monroe Township Middle School. MTMS held its tri-annual veterans program on November 14th to honor local veterans. Students met veterans, asked questions, and participated in a military-style obstacle course, thanks to Mr. Patrick Norts and Ms. Paulina M. Bell. MTMS thanks all veterans for their service. During the week of November 17th, MTMS celebrated American Education Week with several days highlighting staff. Parents were welcome to visit classrooms on November 18th yesterday to observe students. Students shadowed administrators on November 20th, serving as acting administrators. MTMS held the sixth-grade Leap Day Play on November 20th at 7:00 p.m. Annual Virtual Parent Teacher Conferences scheduled for December 1st, sixth grade, and December 3rd for seventh and eighth grade. MTMS wishes the Monroe community a happy Thanksgiving. Now finally, we have the Monroe Township High School. So the Monroe Township High School had a very successful event, we just noted in Haunted High School, hosted on October 29th, and it raised over $4,500 for the Mama Mayor Foundation. There were over 200 people in attendance. It's amazing accomplishment for the high school and everyone who participated, including many school clubs, Spanish Honor Society, future business leaders in America, FBLA, and Red Cross as well. For Veterans Day, the high school had a moment of silence in the morning. This was done to honor those serving in the U.S. Armed Forces, encouraging support for the military of our country. The high school key club hosted a CPR event, allowing teens to become CPR certified without hassle. There were dozens of attendees demonstrating the student interest to ensure safety in the world. Finally, parent-teacher conferences will be held on December 2nd and December 4th, so parents and guardians should be prepared for when request opened on Genesis on November 26th.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Very, very good report. Now we know everything about the entire district because of you, so thank you very much. I just wanted to say, I was invited, Dr. Chetta invited me down to Woodland School for Veterans Day, and it was wonderful. The children were, didn't move when they were seeing veterans around the stage, and they showed like a five-minute video of different wars, and then they had questions for the veterans, and they were so receptive, and they were so proud to be there, and I, the fourth and fifth graders, I have a fourth grader and a fifth-grade grandchildren, and they sat motionless, just fixated on that movie and on those veterans. And I, it was such, so heartwarming to be there that day, and I just wanted to thank Dr. Chetta for inviting me. She invited me back this week, I'm going Friday, for the fourth-grade Wax Museum exhibit that's for American Education Week, so I told her I'd come back, so I'm going back Friday for that. But it was great. It was, it's so nice to be able to get into the schools and see what's going on, and you have to go in and get all the information, so that's terrific.
I'm in a decent amount of clubs, so like, the FBLA, I saw, yeah, and then there was the PTO Woodland Game Night, which was a big success as well, I was there too, so. A lot of clubs are involved in a lot of different.
So you're very active, so you're right there on the spot to get the information, like a reporter?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. DePain, I actually wanted to just mention from his report, I saw him at Haunted High School, and he made a point to say hi to me and my kids and give them candy, which they appreciated and all of that, so, you know, it was definitely fun seeing him there.
Very nice, thank you again. Okay, we have our committee reports this evening. Who would like to go first? Mr. Piero?
So on November 12th, we had our Building Grounds Committee meeting, transportation. We discussed the Apple Garden Frog Grand Projects, the Roof Project, the Electric Service, HVAC project update. Administration provided us with an overview, noting JCPN L finally energized the new building's electric service on November 7th. The HVAC contractor's electrical subcontractor was onsite Monday morning to tend to energize their new electric equipment. Now that the power is in place, we are waiting on the HVAC contractor to provide us with a revised, updated schedule to reflect equipment start-up dates, at which time we could plan our plan for reoccupying the building. The ESEP project update, committee members reviewed the weekly update report provided by Honeywell, which highlights completion, status of the LED lighting, upgraded projects, as well as confirming the early delivery of chillers for Berkeley Brook and Woodland Schools. Construction of the replacement of boilers at the middle school in Berkeley Brook are ongoing. Solar construction under ESEP is still going through the State Regulatory Commission for approval. Once we get them approvals, we'll be able to start with the solar. The HVAC compressor replacement bid at the high school, so the committee reviewed a bid tabulation which included only one bid received. The price is reasonable, and the committee will recommend awarding at the upcoming public meeting. The compressor is a component of the roof air conditioning unit at the high school. Administration noted that the HVAC equipment at high school is now past 16 years old and will start to become an issue in the coming years, but until we replace this, there will be no air conditioning in the high school. So, Mr. Teague's working on that. We did a transportation review with Ms. Marty, she provided us with an update on bus operations, driver staffing, contracted routes, along with Mr. Maraldo, who is still working with her to pilot the program for our new bus app that hopefully we're going to roll out shortly. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Piero. Anyone else? Ms. Ratner?
I just had one quick thing to go with BGNT, and then I can do my report unless someone else has BGNT stuff. So I did want to compliment the administration on getting out the notifications when there are buses and things running late, I know this has been something that they've been working on. The only thing that I have heard from a couple of community members is it used to show which bus it was, and parents are getting like a generic, more generic message now that the bus is running late, but if you have multiple kids, you don't necessarily know which bus it is. So I, I remember at one point it was showing the route, so I don't know if something changed, but if that can be looked at, that would be great.
Yeah, I can take a look at it. My guess is the generic ones are preloaded and are very quick to get out, because it's a standard message that we can push out to a bus list. I'll talk to them about whether the personalized one, again, with, you know, messages coming in constantly and doing this at the same time, you know? We just want to make sure we get it out in time, but it should also be informative as well. Agreed.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ratner?
All right. The Legislative Advocacy and Community Engagement Committee and the Citizens Advisory Committee met on November 12th. Board of Education members present were myself, Mrs. Aziz, Ms. DePain, Dr. Peck, and Ms. Alvarez. The district administrators in attendance were Dr. Lehman and Mr. Maraldo. The committee was presented two letters, advocacy letters for Mr. Maraldo, one regarding the funding formula, and the other regarding full-day kindergarten, and these were revisions on what we've had, you know, with the addition of certain items in each one. The committee decided to hold off on sending our full-day kindergarten letter to our legislators until we get the numbers back from our design study, because we know that's something that they have requested when we are asking for things. So then, we then discussed the Department of Education survey regarding funding. Initially, we had the thought to send this survey out to the community, however, once we opened it, we saw that the questions were very nuanced, even when we were looking at it in the committee, we noticed like, if you answered a question a certain way, you were getting different questions, and, you know, some of the questions aren't necessarily things that majority of the public would have information about, even, you know, as a board member for four years, there were things I wasn't really sure what would be best for our school district. So what we decided to do is we said it would be best to possibly intertwine some of the information that the survey was asking about and put it into the letter that we would then send to the Department of Education, to their school funding email address, as well as also sending it to our legislators, just so they're aware of our requests, as well as also including possible options for the funding bills that are currently being proposed by legislators. And so then, the committee members were asked to share their feedback, so that, that way we can get this letter out as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Bora?
I was wondering if Ms. Alvarez wants to go first, so that I can do my committees, because I do have a little health insurance related.
Oh, okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Nobody had questions for Keith, right?
No one had questions, no?
All right, the Policy Committee met on Wednesday, November 12th. There is new legislation requiring districts to adopt a policy and procedure that provides standards for the curation of library material and establishes criteria for the removal of existing library material. This new legislation is effective December 9th, 2025, and Strauss Esme has made the necessary updates to the language regarding updates to include these new guidelines to Policy and Regulation Guides 2530, 2535, and 9130. These policies and regulations are on tonight's agenda for first read, and additionally, we continued with the review of our policy manual. It was brought to the committee's attention that Strauss Esme, that a Strauss Esme representative offered a similar service. Mrs. Ratner will reach out for follow-up information, which will be shared in next month's committee meeting, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Alvarez? Ms. Bora?
Hoping that we get the free.
Well, can I?
I can follow up.
Thank you for networking for the board.
Speed dick and a date, but I didn't know.
Right, so. I saw your update.
So since the, the meeting, we actually, the rep from Strauss Esme that I spoke to at the conference reached out and emailed Dr. Lehman and myself, and provided the actual audit completed.
Oh, wow.
Which, at first I was nervous, because I was like, oh my gosh, if we're charged for this, like, I did not request that, but they went through it in the same way, sort of that New Jersey school boards did. I haven't taken a close look at it, because we just got it yesterday, but it basically says which policies need to be removed or updated, exactly what New Jersey school boards gave us, except this is now aligned with their numbers and stuff, so hopefully it takes a lot of the puzzle work off of what, you know, we were sort of asking our, our business office to do. And then, when, one thing they did mention was if we want them to update it, because there are several updates, I don't know if they're small or large, that, you know, they would do it for a small cost, and so we discussed possibly looking to see if it was cost-effective to do that, or if it made more sense for us to look at it and make those updates in-house.
All this from networking at the workshop, so thank you for stopping by at Strauss Esme and getting this. I'm going to do the Curriculum Co-Curricular Athletics and Pupil Personnel Committee minutes first. The committee met on November 12th. The first item on the agenda was a discussion on the NTHS final exam student performance data. This has been a yearly conversation on this committee since 2023, when many parents and students had brought up the concern that kids were failing the course only due to the final exam. In the first year of this discussion, the weightage of final exams was changed from 16% to 12%. That same year, the high school also instituted the current system of students getting higher rigor classes based on teacher recommendation and grades only. The data showed that 18% of the finals were failed in the last school year, of which 2.6% eventually failed the course. of which 2.6% eventually failed the course. Both percentages were slightly lower than when this data was first discussed two years ago. The original concern was that students were failing the course because of the final, and that number has reduced from 45 to 29 in the last two years. The next item on the agenda was an update on the co-op for ice hockey by Mr. Berandica. He shared that we would be in an NJSIAA-approved co-op with South Brunswick and North Brunswick for ice hockey for the next few years. We have 14 athletes trying up this week. I believe the try-ups are over. I'm not sure what the outcome was, but they're trying up for one combined team. Mr. Berandica shared that the combined team will practice and play home games at Pro Skate Ice Rink in South Brunswick. The team will play under the banner of South Brunswick School District, and one of the Monroe coaches will be part of the coaching team for this new team. Last on the agenda was a continuation of the update on the summer enrichment programs by Mr. Maraldo. MTASD Summer Enrichment had an extremely successful last season with First Lego League, Project Code, Cooking with Canter, Music and Theater Camps that were attended by not just Monroe students, but also Spotswood, Jamesburg, and Cranbury kids. New this year was the Viral Voyager Med Health Focus Camp. Mr. Maraldo highlighted how we were able to break even on these camps due to the generous donations of community members and local businesses. This year, we also pilot a Falcon's Nest enrichment program for pre-K kids, which allowed our high schools in the Working with Children program to get additional experience over summer through this camp. The new Mind and Motion Academy for kindergarten through second grade kids was also a huge success and was run by varsity coaches who were also STEM specialists that kept the kids engaged on the field and in the classrooms through well-planned physical and mental activities. And that concludes the curriculum report.
Are there any questions for Ms. Borah?
All right. I'm going to move on to the Finance and Shared Services Committee notes. Board members in attendance were myself, Mr. Zeichner, Mr. Piero, Dr. Peck, and Mrs. Depin. We had Dr. Lehman and Ms. Allen, and also in attendance was our broker from Gallagher Associates, Mr. Mario Karsick. The committee reviewed the bill list for August for a total of $914,988. An addendum was expected before the board meeting. I believe the addendum is a little over $13 million. The committee then reviewed the attorney fees for the months of September for a total of $6,917 and for the month of October for $5,897. The next item on the agenda was a presentation by Mr. Mario Karsick of Gallagher Benefit Services about the proposed shift to Aetna as the health insurance carrier. Before I summarize this part of the meeting, I would urge all community members, including staff of the MTASD, to listen to the video recording of this meeting to hear the detailed discussion firsthand. Earlier this year, all school districts covered by the state health insurance were informed that the cost would go up by 32% in the coming year. District administration requested a claims experience report and started shopping around to see if any other carrier would cover us. As shared by the broker at this meeting, of the 26 school districts he was shopping for, only four school districts were approved by another carrier, Monroe being one of the four. The cost of Aetna would be 29% more than this year, which is still much less than the cost of the state plan. We expect to pay $800,000 less if we move to Aetna from the state plan. The plan guarantees the same, if not better, coverage to our employees, and they will have access to a benefits website from Gallagher to help ensure a smooth transition in coverage. To make the switch to Aetna, the district needs to give the state 60-day notice. A resolution is placed into tonight's agenda for board approval. I would, Mr. Payne, if I can, I would like to ask Ms. Allen to speak to the part of this process where we did meet with the MTEA before the Finance Committee meeting. And I also want to let everybody know that we do have in attendance today a representative from Gallagher Benefit Services. In case any concerned community members have any questions, they could bring it up in the public forum. But Ms. Allen, if you could just talk to the process and if you've, you know, been in communication with the stakeholders and covered all the bases. Thank you.
Yeah, so I will start with, mid-July, we requested from, when we found out that the rates were going up so high, we requested from the state our claims reports. That took about eight weeks to get from them. As soon as we got them and we sent them to our broker, and he looked, you know, he worked with his actuaries and he came up with, and went out to the market. So as soon as he came back and was able to provide us with a quote from Aetna, because we did not, the other, Horizon would not quote us, the Schiff would not quote us. So it was between Aetna and the state plan. So he came back and provided that information to us. That was, I think, on a Friday. The Monday after that, Dr. Lehman and I met with him. He came and presented the proposal to us. The next day, we had a meeting with all of the union leadership reps altogether. And we, and Mr. Karsick presented the plan and all the information to everybody. And there was a really good meeting, and everybody had lots of great questions. After that, he went and prepared this website with the employee portal, and he has lots of information on there. The union leadership, MTA leadership, actually, that week that we had fall break, when everybody, this district was closed, I appreciate they took the time then to go through his website, his everything, and really look at it carefully and come up with any questions or any, you know, just feedback. So we gave that back to Mr. Karsick, who updated his website with everything, answered questions. And as soon as we all came back from break, we sent a letter to the reps, all the union leadership, stating what was going to happen and providing the link to the website so they could look at it as well because we were going to send it out the following day to the whole staff. So the entire staff has access to this information. There's a cost calculator, there's the doctors that you can visit, there's prescription information. There's lots of really good information out there, and it keeps building the website as more information comes in. So it's really a great thing, and everybody, we've been very transparent. We've been moving this as long as, you know, as we had to. And so everybody has that information now that they can look at. And we were waiting until they could see it and not be shocked or anything. And then we presented it to Finance. Mr. Karsick came and presented it. And we had a good meeting, and that's why we're bringing it to the board tonight. And then after, if we are able to get this board approved, he will meet with, he's set up three meetings already, virtual meetings for the whole staff to attend at night so that's, you know, after the workday, they can choose any of the three meetings or all of them, attend the meetings. The meetings will be recorded and put on the portal so they will, anyone can go in and look. Or if they have other questions and they don't want everyone to know their questions, they can put that in there as well. And they can reach out to the Gallagher team, who is going to be there for any questions and any help with everybody, you know, with this transition. So it's, everything, you know, we have done everything we could think of to just make everybody aware of what's going on and to be, to be out there to help. And I do want to just mention, it is, what we've been told, it's a very easy transition. Anyone who is not changing their plan does nothing. It's only if you're going to change your plan that you would have to, during the, I think, the month of December, you would have to do like the open enrollment process. But everybody else is just going to be seamless. It's, well, I should say seamless in the fact that you don't have to do anything. You will have, you may have different prescription doctors or something, but it will be an easy transition. And it has been, Aetna has provided a letter that it is better than or equal to the plan that we already have with the state. It's actually the same exact plan. Aetna is with the state. So we are, you know, it's an easy transition really for everybody's records to go into this Aetna plan.
I'll just add one thing, and then I'll open it up for questions. So the timing of, right, I'll just, last piece of information. The timing of this resolution is such, is critical because our premiums go up in January. So if we pass this resolution today, we need to give them 60-day notice to the state. So we will be paying the higher premiums for the month of January, but we transition starting February. So with every meeting that we push this forward, we will be paying an additional month of higher premium. So that's why this was put on the agenda immediately. Please, all board members, feel free to ask questions, and I'm sure the administration will answer. Go ahead.
Will this change affect our retirees, and if so, how?
We don't have the retirees on the plan. They're with the state. Is that correct? Yeah.
Anyone else?
I just want to make a comment. It's not unusual for school districts to switch insurances before the contract expires. That's happened to me many, many times in my 26 years working in a school district. As long as the plan is equal to or better, it does happen, even though you're still under a three-year period under an object. It's not unusual at all.
And can I make a comment? Ms. Allen, can you describe the change with the prescriptions, how it's going to another?
May I ask Mr. Columbo from Gallagher to assist with that, please?
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting.
Yes, the transition will be, it's with Aetna, which also owns CVS. It will be CVS PBM, which is this prescription benefit manager coming from the state plan. So each one could potentially have a different formulary, which is the list of medications that they cover. They'll still cover every illness and everything. So I'll give you an example of what I mean by formularies. The state may say Flonase for allergies is the preferred brand. If you come across, CVS may have it listed as Nazanex, and that's kind of the type of thing. So all the same illnesses are covered. It could potentially be some changes of medications, but the vast majority, the exact same medications.
I think what was told to us, if somebody has a medication that they cannot take a generic, then the doctor has, there's an authorization form for the doctor to fill out and very easy, simple. If I remember, I can't think of his last name.
Mr. Karsick.
Mario Karsick, yes.
Mario. I remember Mario, but I didn't want to say him by his first name. And he mentioned that, that that would be easier for them to switch from the regular and not a generic. But then I want to ask you too, what about mail-in? Would they have a choice to do mail-in, and it will be cheaper?
It is. You have the two co-pays for a three-month supply instead of paying a co-pay every time. So it's still that. It's done through CVS mail order. And again, we have many schools that are either direct with Aetna, direct with Blue Cross, or the state plan that shift. So it's just each one has their own PBM and slight differences in terms of how you have to go about it. But yes, it's through CVS mail order, and you get your maintenance medications at the cheaper co-pay.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, very good. Anyone else have any reports? We're finished, right? We're up to the public forum, agenda items only. If you'd like to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name and your address.
Good evening. George Gunkelman, 5 Kelly Court, Monroe. I have some questions about Applegarth. I heard the Building and Grounds report regarding what's going on. I think I understand that. That's my old industry. What I don't understand is in the agenda, it lists Applegarth as having fire and lockdowns. How do you do that with no students? We also have an enrollment count with the school being closed. Makes me wonder about the other numbers on that list if, if.
Mr. Piero, would you like to?
So under state law, each school has to do a fire drill. They're housed in Applegarth. I mean, the middle schools. So they're in the middle school, so I'm sure that the drills are the same day, but it has to list by law every school.
So they're not in Applegarth?
No, they're in the middle school, the Applegarth students.
They're in the middle school?
Yes.
So the Applegarth students.
Why do we call it attendance at Applegarth when they're not in attendance at Applegarth?
Because they're still Applegarth students, coded as Applegarth students, grade four and five students. Their location right now is at the middle school, a temporary location. So when we conduct our drills, they're Applegarth students participating in a fire drill or a lockdown drill or a bus evacuation drill.
All right. There's, I think I've missed a meeting, but since a couple of meetings ago, there's been a fair amount of slippage in the schedule of completion there. And I understand from the report that some of the items from PSE and G and as well as a couple of the contractors are just now coming online, which explains why we're still not in there. But, you know, do our contracts call for any delay penalties from any of these contractors? And are we going to be able to collect on those, or whether not collection, it's a deduction from a month's owed? And the other thing is, is there a new date for when the students will, I don't know what to call it, re-enroll, re-occupy? Help me out a little bit here.
So yes, there are delay penalties. And to the extent that we can implement those penalties, we will. And I'm not going to get into detail because we anticipate there even could be potential litigation related to that. So we intend to apply the contract as it's written. And that would be the extent of our comment. There are delay penalties that are written into the contract for the various contractors that we've been engaging with. So if they did not meet deadlines, we certainly will seek out restitution as we can. In terms of a new date, the new date will be defined as soon as, so the last step that's going to, that's in process is everything is energized. The manufacturer of the new equipment, the new HVAC, the new blower units and things, they're, they need to be onsite, plug into these units, turn them on, verify that they link to the computer systems. That's part of the implementation of the warranty system. That was scheduled for the fall break. Because JCPN L did not energize the building related to weather issues and things, that had to be rescheduled. So they are scheduling that manufacturer to come back on and basically turn on these units and activate them as soon as that happens. We've been in on the weekends cleaning the rooms. We've been doing everything we can on the front end. So as soon as we get that manufacturer, not we, as soon as he's scheduled by the HVAC contractor to get back onsite and do what he was supposed to do, we will have that building re-occupied. And we anticipate, expect an answer any day with that new timeline. And as soon as we get that, we will communicate that out.
A couple of months ago, we had a date. Now, two months later, we don't have a date anymore.
So every date that's been given has been grounded in a critical action path provided by the contractor.
I understand.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, sir, for your comments and questions. Anyone else would like to speak?
Hi, April Gardner. I live at 67 N Amherst Lane in Rossmore. And I've lived in Monroe for about 12 years now, living 12 years. I'm not sure if mine comes under an agenda item or at the end. However, I think what I want to talk about is part and parcel of five. And I wanted to talk about the doctrine of necessity. And I think that's part of five. Yes, okay. I kind of come here, well, I do come here with a heavy heart because when I read this, I felt bad for our school, and I felt bad for our students. And I want to explain to you why. Because having to have something posted on our website that has to do with conflicts of interest in the School Ethics Act, not having a quorum, and having to vote to allow something that really shouldn't happen, but you have to have it happen to keep business rolling, which is in essence the truth, to have deliberation and a vote, and that's why this has to be completed. You have to have the doctrine of necessity. So what happened was I saw this posted, and apparently there's another one tonight, if I'm correct. And initially, I had called the business office, and I had left a message. In fact, I called, I believe, twice because I was confused by this, and I never got a call back. So to better understand it, I called the school ethics office, and I discuss this with them. Oftentimes, we live in this town, and we're wondering why school budgets aren't passed, why there's arguments of new school we don't want to pay. And we live in a world where perception is 99% of life. So when people see something like this posted, especially, my concern was that. especially, my concern was that, quite frankly, it was illogical to me that the two people who brought for it to be approved were named in it. And I have a little problem with that. But be that as it may, I would hope that when there's a conflict of interest requiring this, that people take a look and see if they really can act in the best interest of the school. This is a very, very complicated issue. This is nothing new. And I feel very sad to have to come here and talk about this. I've always raved, I haven't been it left, I've always raved about the town. And I'm trying to convince my daughter to move here. I have a grandson. He's in fourth grade over at St. Port's in East Brunswick. And I tell my daughter Lauren, I say, why don't you move to Monroe? Grammy's right here in infamous Rossmore, you know, and he can come here and go to school, because I believe he would benefit from this school district. And then I see something like this, and it makes me really sad, because I don't know what your litigation is about. I just know that when people see this posted, they have a very, very, very sad, sour feeling about our school district, because they don't know the complications involved, the legalese. But I actually called twice and couldn't get a phone call back. So I don't know how this is going to resolve itself. But I would hope that in the future, that maybe people can say, maybe I should recuse myself, or not be on the board anymore, because I have to have this type of paperwork brought forward. It makes me sad as a taxpayer here. I just don't think that our schools shine when I can go home and print this out. And I found out that this is part of a few, and that's what I wanted to share, because I think we have a wonderful town. And I really think that this is a great school system. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Did you want us to sign this? There's a paper sign-in on the board.
Only, the paper's there, only if we didn't get to any of your questions, and we have to maybe call you back up.
All right.
I wanted to make sure we got to everybody's questions.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Bob Valentine, Monroe. I just wanted a couple of clarifying questions on health insurance. What is kind of the transition? When you go on, assuming this is all approved, and you go on to Aetna, you'll still have claims being adjudicated from the state plan. I'm assuming the state's going to continue to adjudicate those claims. Until some point over a period of months, they'll start to run out. And what I'm curious about, because I, to be honest, I don't understand the state plan that well, I'm not familiar with it, does that create any financial exposure requirements for the district to cover that? And if it does, is that factored into the calculation of what you expect the savings to be when the transition?
I like, I think maybe we can ask the broker who's here tonight to answer the gentleman.
And maybe just one other question for him?
Sure.
And you don't have to go into the details of this. I'm just curious. I assume there's some type of stop-loss provision in the state plan. Is it going to have the same, will the stop-loss provisions be in the Aetna plan at the same levels? Those are my two questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
No financial liability when you're leaving the state plan. So although the state plan is self-insured, it's fully insured rates for the district. So you pay just for the month you're there. So you're covered up until the date you decide to terminate, and then you just start a new contract. The Aetna plan that you're moving to is also fully insured, so it's not self-insured where you have stop-loss. It's built set rates, you pay monthly, and that's all you pay.
Okay. Was that substantial to answer your questions? Thank you, sir, for your questions. Anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening. Chrissy Skirby, Monroe Township. I have a question for Ms. Allen. So with the transferring over to the new plan, what is the increase in premiums from last year's budget to this year's budget? What will the increase in the premiums be? The percentage?
From, well, so premiums are going up with the state, 32%, and 29% with Aetna.
So how much, how much does that equate to in cost?
In, I don't have that, I don't have that figure.
Okay.
No.
All right. Maybe potentially you can email that to me. I'd like to know how that's going to impact the budget for next year, because that's a substantial...
It is.
A substantial increase in percentage. I know that from when I was on the board. I did watch the curriculum committee the other night, and I had a very nice conversation with Dr. Lehman the next day. I asked for the report that the board had that evening. I was told that it's still in draft form, so when it's finalized, it will be made public. But Dr. Lehman did share the numbers that was on that report. And while there were changes made, and we reduced, when I was on the board, under Dr. Chanley, she had them reduce the percentage that the final exams counted toward the final grade. These numbers are still very alarming, because the number of final exams still being failed has gone up. It hasn't gone down. Last year, it was over 3,000 final exams failed. This year, it was 2,908 final exams failed. We've not made any strides in bringing that number down. Yes, students are not seeing that weighted as high in their average, and they're passing, they're not failing a course simply because they failed the final exam. But when I was on the board, and I know Ms. Bora, you and I really advocated for this, we wanted to have the data of what courses do we see students failing final exams in? That was three years ago. I asked the question the other day, and the answer still is, we don't know. We need to know. And we need to go back, and we need to examine where it is. And I watched Dr. Higgins mention that it was a misnomer, or whatever, that when Ms. Bora said that it all came up because community members were concerned with chemistry. And I think it was AP chemistry, when I was on the board, or honors chemistry, that parents were reaching out to you and me about. So that was not a rumor. That was something that was happening. And it is honors and AP courses that students are failing the final exams in. It's not just regular courses. So I really encourage, I know, Kazala, I'm very sad that you're leaving the board. You have done an amazing job with the curriculum committee. I hope somebody who takes over that role on curriculum has as much drive as you do to really be there for the students, because this is unacceptable. This isn't a failure of the students. This is a failure of our district. We should not have 2,908 final exams being failed at the high school. We shouldn't. We need to look at why they're being failed, and does the curriculum not match the final. We're doing a very, very disservice to our students if we do not look at that. And talking in percentages confuses the, confuses the community. I watched it, and it meant nothing to me. That's why I called Dr. Lehman and asked for the actual numbers. So while we may say the percentages of failing a final and it affecting the grade, the amount of tests being failed are going up, and we need to do better.
Your time is up. Thank you for your comments. Dr. Lehman, did you want to, hey, Dr. Lehman, would you like to say something or not?
No, I, we appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, we'll continue with the meeting. Okay. We'll close the public portion of the meeting. And I know our student would like to say something, so please.
Yeah, so finals are worth, I think, 14 or 12%. I can't remember on the top of my head. But the reason why final grade, like, we also realize the fact that more students started taking AP, which looks better on college rigor. So the fact that more students fail exams is obviously due to the fact they're taking harder classes, which is a good thing. Like, failing, I wouldn't say is a good thing, but more students taking academically harder challenges is showing that our district is becoming stronger. So if the rate of failing stayed the same, but more students took harder classes, would that not be a good thing, because students are reaching academic rigor?
No.
But I feel like if they're taking harder classes, obviously, the finals is going to be hard. That's stuff they get into when they take a harder class.
Okay, no, that's, no, we're not going to, that's, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Go on to these, Dr. Lehman's report?
Sure, thank you. So a couple breaking news out of the press, recognitions. We have our MTMS chamber singers selected for the NJMEA State Conference. So for the third time, MTMS chamber singers auditioned for and were successfully selected to perform at the NJMEA State Conference this February. This is a huge honor that reflects outstanding work of our students and their director, Ms. Nina Schmetterer. So congratulations. The MTHS students, we had some accepted to the ACDA All Eastern Choir. ACDA stands for American Choral Directors Association. So five MTHS chorus students successfully auditioned for the ACDA All Eastern Chorus. They're going to travel to Providence, Rhode Island, to perform at the ACDA Eastern Regional Division Conference in February 2026, singing alongside students from 11 other states. So congratulations to even more of our talented students on this remarkable achievement. So congratulations. I found out about that today. And then before I get into my report, I just want to wish everyone, we are already on that timeframe where it's Thanksgiving is coming up. So if you're visiting family or traveling, be safe and have a safe holiday. And our next board meeting, we're going to be recognizing and acknowledging the achievements of our fall athletics and teams and students. So that's something to look forward to in December. So under personnel items, the 10-member vote, it's recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items A through O.
Motion?
Second.
Ms. Allen, roll call, please. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Personnel items, nine-member vote. It's recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items P through AP. P through AP.
Motion?
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under Board Action, 10-member vote, it's recommended that the board approve the attached Board Action items A through K. A through K.
Motion?
Second.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes, Ms. Ratner.
I just want to get clarification. The revision in the calendar, is that just the start date, start time, rather, of the reorganization meeting? Is there another change?
Yes.
That's all it is?
Yes.
Okay.
We were requested by Jamesburg, they're having their meeting right before ours. So if we started ours a little later, their new representative or their representative could come over and participate in ours.
For sure. Okay.
And we also couldn't do a closed session that day, because we...
Yeah, we're not doing closed session, so yeah.
Yeah, so it works out perfectly.
Yep.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then Board Action, nine-member vote. It's recommended that the board approve Board Action items L through Q. L through Q.
Motion?
Second.
Ms. Allen? Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Uh, yes, we're Q's on letter M for Mr. Ratner.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. It is recommended that Board Action items A through K?
Can I, can I just ask a quick question?
Yes, Mr. Zeichner.
Under the business administrators, looking at G1, it says under G1, retire employees. It was mentioned, a question was asked about that insurance plan, and so many, I forget, I think it was Sarah had asked about that.
Yeah, yeah.
She said it would not affect retired employees, I think. And so, but it says on here, retired employees, so I think we need to make sure that that's...
This is, to my understanding, is just the standard, or the state statute, resolution that we have to pass. I don't know if we can amend that. Is that, Mr. Columbo, do you know if we can amend that resolution to get out of the state? Plan?
I don't think I understand the question. I'm sorry. Well, I'm trying to get clarification on, a question was asked about whether the change in the healthcare would affect retired employees. And I think the answer was no, it would not.
Sure, I'll, I'll explain on that, too. So...
Yeah, if you would, because it says on here, retired employees. I just want to make sure we don't vote on something that's listed here.
Sure. The, it's called an A4 surcharge when you are fully, when you have coverage direct with an insurance carrier, and you're charged a percentage, and it's built into the rates that we're going to be paying. So you're paying for those retirees to stay in the state health benefits plan. And they will stay within that state health benefits plan.
Okay, so they won't be in the Aetna plans?
Correct. They stay in the state plan, which is, is actually run by Aetna within the state of New Jersey. It's at the Aetna Medicare Choice Plan.
Then do we need to make a change on this, because it says retired employee?
Yeah. So the resolution that we're provided with for the state, there is a sentence that says, we understand that the New Jersey Division of Pensions and Benefits will notify retired employees of the cancellation of their coverage. Is that something...
The resolution, the form is directly from the state, and that's the language they want on there? And it can't be altered?
And if I'm not mistaken, the retirees are actually going to be in the state health benefits plan, because that's where the pension system has retirees. So...
I'll make a motion for the 10-member business administrators.
And I'll second it.
Let me, I guess.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on that?
I do have one question. And I apologize, I did not, I missed this in my email. So item E for the VEX benefits, the Discovery Benefits, I see that it's changing from January starting next year, and the attachment shows the FSA monthly increasing for the minimum fee is increasing significantly. So if you could explain to me the process of communicating this to the employees, and is this an expected change? Because that jump in the FSA monthly minimum is significant. This is item E for the VEX Discovery Benefits.
Oh, yeah. Just look at the grade sheet. This is something that would go out in an email from our benefits person, who addresses all the changes in any rates.
Okay, I will just abstain on it then.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Ratner?
Yep. I just wanted to get a quick clarification on letter A, number five. Under the professional appointments, it says a fee up to $4,000 for neuropsychological, sorry, neuropsychological evaluations, and because parents are allowed to request it, which I understand, and we can't name any individuals, because we don't know. I guess, is there any, is there any vetting on our part of who is doing those, or they can select from anybody?
So it's recommended that annually, the board adopts essentially rates that it is willing to pay for individuals who may want to have evaluations done at district expense. And so this, if I'm not mistaken, is actually setting that rate for that specific type of an evaluation. And based on my experience, $4,000 for a neuropsychological is pretty darn good.
No, I agree. I just didn't know if they have to select from certain people, or they can use anyone. They can use anybody they want.
That's not, that's not before the board right now.
That's just, okay.
What we have to do is, we have to set what we're willing to pay. That's...
Okay. And if I can just add, it's been $2,500 since, I think, before 2018. So the going rate now, the going rate right now is about $5,500. So we are asking for less.
But the problem is, the result from that, though, if it was kept at $2,500, is that parents would have to pay the difference between the $2,500 and whatever they're being charged for the neuropsychological. So we know that neuropsychologicals are somewhere in the range of $5,000 or so. Some are cheaper. But the point is, is that we want to kind of bring back ourselves up to reality, because otherwise, we could potentially be short-changing parents.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes to all, requise on letter B for check number 11526 and 11920.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes to all.
Ms. Bora?
Yes to all, but abstain on letter E. E as in elephant.
E, okay. Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, requise on, due to conflict, on letter E and G, and then requise on the bill list for C11218 for Mr. Snyder, C11605 for Mr. Laurie, and C11526 for Methesol and Werble, and then on the bill list, addendum for C11832 and C118989 for Mr. Snyder.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. It is recommended that Board Actions L through M be approved by consent roll call under a nine-member vote.
Motion?
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Ms. Alvarez?
Just a quick question. I'm sorry, we have no worries. Questions, I'm sorry. Just, first of all, I'm happy to see another one of our schools getting the grants, but usually multiple schools get it at that time for the Unified Champion School Grant. Is there a reason we didn't...
It trickles in, so, yeah, I mean, usually we'll have them a couple months sequentially.
I was gonna say, I think we saw it.
And the awards vary as well. So, they used to be 10, 12, $15,000, and they've...
They've reduced the amount a lot, yes.
Right, I think it was on either last month or the month before for a couple of the other schools.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Any questions again?
I was going to acknowledge the grant.
Same question?
She stole my thunder again.
Oh, she stole your question, okay. Okay.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
My report is just to thank all these board members for their hard work and our administrators over the last few months since school started. Mr. Teig especially too with the Applegarth School, and everyone trying to push to get that school open. So that's my thankfulness for all of you being on this board, our students especially too, who bring us a lot of vital information about the entire district. So, and I just want to say, as the board president, I have something I want to say. I don't know, Mr. Zeichner, if you want to say before I open it up.
Well, you could, if you want to go first or...
You want me to go first? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. As the board president, it is my responsibility to address conduct that affects the functioning, reputation, and integrity of our Monroe Township Board of Education. Recently, I was made aware of a public Facebook comment that someone posted on our board in response to a woman who expressed a political viewpoint different from their own. In that comment, as it originally appeared and as documented in Facebook, and here we go with the social media again, which I said, I think, when I first sat down in this spot, get off of social media, just go through your day. If you want to look for your children and see what they're doing, your grandchildren, look at that, but please watch the social media. As originally appeared and as documented in Facebook's edit history, you wrote that you hope that she is amongst the many rapes that occur, and this is referring to Mr. Mondami being elected to the New York Mayor. A statement invoking sexual violence towards any person is completely unacceptable for a public official, and especially for a member of a Board of Education. Regardless of political disagreement, no board member should ever make comments that degrade, threaten, or wish harm on another individual. This remark caused significant concern within the community, including our high school students. Unfortunately, something was sent in error to one of our high school students, and no offense against you, just like anything, just like the, it just went like wildfire and spread through the school, and it reflected poorly on our board. Although you later edited, the person involved with this edited the comment and issued an apology, the original language had already been widely viewed and caused great harm. This incident also comes in the context of our other concerns regarding conduct during board meetings this past year. There have been occasions where you left meetings abruptly, used inappropriate language as you were walking out, or displayed behavior inconsistent with the decorum expected of a board member. At this time, I urge this person to reflect on how their actions, both online and during board meetings, impact this board and the community we serve. If you, sir, decide to continue as a member of this board, I hope you do so in a manner worthy of the position that you hold. Thank you for listening. Anyone else would like to make a comment? Mr. Zeichner?
Yeah, but I noticed that you didn't mention the individual.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it should be other under-board business. So I will wait, other board business is next. Yes, Ms. Bora?
Would you like to speak, Charlie?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
To what I said, Charlie, or what's...
Yeah, I just, to the attorney, can we, can I say who that individual is?
To the extent that you're going to express your opinion, your personal opinion...
Yes, that's what I'm...
I suggest that you indicate that whatever you say is going to, you're saying it as an individual...
I am.
As not a board member, and does not reflect the opinions or thoughts of this board.
Yeah, and I have already indicated that.
And I have to say that as a disclaimer too, that really hit me very badly, because I'm a mom of two daughters and three granddaughters, and it was terrible to see that, so it really bothered me. But now we're going to other board of education business, so Mr. Zeichner, if you would like to speak now, you can.
Yeah, I would like to.
Please do.
If I might. First, let me say the gentleman I'm going to reference is not here this evening, and unfortunately, what I'm about to say has to be made for the record. It has to be placed on the record, because I feel so strong about this, and it's really upsetting to me, because I do not really, I'm not happy doing this. I mean, it's something I do not wish to do, but as it is, I feel I must say it. As a disclaimer, what I'm about to say reflects my own personal opinion as an individual board member and does not reflect the collective views of the board. Also, what I am about to say is not personal, and is not intended to impugn this person's character. Recently, I saw a social media post by Mr. Tofano, a member of our Board of Education, responding to a positive comment from a woman about Mondani's election as mayor of New York City. He wrote, "I can't wait for him," meaning Mondani, "to work, and I hope you're among the many rapes that occur when they're, when he ties the hands of the NYPD, and then enjoy. And you're married to a cop, whether disgraced you are." This message was posted 11:18 and repeated at 11:19 a.m. About two hours later, he forwarded the same message, but he added the word "not" to soften his original response. It read, "I can't wait for him," meaning again Mondani, "to work, and I hope you're not among," so he used the word "not," "among the many rapes that occur there when he ties the hands of the NYPD, and then enjoy." I assume he changed his comment in response to numerous negative reactions he received. Many hours later, he did apologize to the woman and claimed his remarks were a typo. And Mr. Tofano is a representative of the Board of Education. What he says in a public forum without a disclaimer reflects poorly on this entire board and its members. His words, in my opinion, were disgraceful, deplorable, and insensitive. Words matter. Once you say something derogatory or in bad taste, you own it, no matter how you might feel or say afterwards. This isn't the first time that this has happened, that he's displayed poor judgment. He needs to find a better way to express his feelings. For example, recently, he walked out of a board meeting and he made a disrespectful comment to a newly-elected board member, and then used profanity against the board, like because, likely because he disagreed with the decision. This is an inappropriate way to conduct oneself. You know, you're elected by the citizens of Monroe Township, and you have a responsibility to them, okay? Mr. Tofano's behaviors were negative. It just wasn't appropriate. In one particular exchange with a woman, she said, "What a strange thing to say as a member of the Monroe Township Board of Education." His reply was, "You think because I'm on the Board of Education, my right to free speech are canceled? Sorry, that is not the way it works, not yet anyway, but keep voting these type of people into office." I don't know what kind of people he's referring to, and they will take those rights away soon. Do you think perhaps you overreacted to her comment, and that it was appropriately weighted? I don't. Mr. Tofano, I sincerely, and I mean that, I sincerely hope you'll consider changing your behavior. Look, none of us is perfect. We all make regrettable choices, and I'm telling you that, speaking for myself, I'm one of those people. I make some poor judgments at times, but I'm careful in terms of what I say, and I'm careful in terms of how I respect other people, whether I'm on this board, whether in the public domain, I must treat them with courtesy, dignity, and respect. That's the only way you can deal with people. So, and I try to learn from those mistakes. Why? Because I'm looking to improve myself as a human being, how I interact with other people. So I'm asking him, please, please, adjust your conduct on this board. Maybe, and I won't go on with anything else I want to say here, I'm just hoping that he'll recognize that he's just going in the wrong direction, and I hope that he will make some changes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Bora?
I wanted to take a minute to thank Ms. Ratner for running again, and congratulate her on her resounding victory. The board is lucky to have you for the second term. I see Ms. Forster's in the audience, I would like to congratulate her on her election to the Monroe Township Board of Ed, and Mr. Marazin, who's also elected. I wish all three of them a very successful term, looking out for the students of Monroe. I also wanted to take a minute to, every time there's board business, I make a motion. Tonight, I will not, because I am hopeful that we will conclude this investigation on Dr. Chanley soon, and hopefully by my last meeting, which is next month, we would have some sort of an outcome on the investigation, and I can see some closure to this before I step off the board, because it has been a very harrowing experience for everybody, for the district as a whole. Like the nice lady also mentioned, we are taking measures that are, you know, that are unreal, just to continue board business, so I would like to see the saga end soon, and hopefully before my term ends. But again, congratulations to the newly-elected board members, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Hope you get to spend good, quality time with family. Thank you.
Yeah, you took my thunder too. I was going to congratulate Ms. Ratner for winning her second term with us.
Only like four more to go to catch up, right?
Three more years, and then also Ms. Forster's in the audience, congratulate her. She will be joining us in January, and Mr. Marazin, I don't think he's here this evening. Congratulations to you also. We're looking forward to the two new board members and having our trusty sidekick with us, our legislative person who knows everything from soup to nuts, and glad you're back with us, Kate.
Thank you.
And looking forward to spending the time with you again, so.
Do I get to go next? Because I can show you again, Ms. Bora stole my thunder, like I have it typed up right over here, but...
And I had it next to my note, but I jumped to something else, so go ahead.
So, really quick, I guess I'll start with that. I did want to say congratulations both to Eric and to Vanessa on their successful elections, and I look forward to working with both of them in January. I also did want to just take a moment to thank Arsalan and Roshni and Sumaya for running as well, for their willingness to serve, and all the ideas and conversations that we had, like, everyone up here knows, it's really hard running for office, not just on you, but your entire family, so I did just want to also acknowledge them for putting themselves out there. And then just really quick, a couple of things. I had attended the Haunted High School, and, you know, I won't go too much on it, but like, it's honestly, if you haven't gone, try to go next year. It's one of the best events I think our district has. I know, I think I had seen Ms. Forster there actually as well, you know, and it's just the kids, the high school kids do such a great job interacting with our younger students. Ms. Aziz, I think I saw you in the hallway, you know, so we definitely, you know, they can probably attest to it as well, it's just a great event. I also happened to see the Fall High School Musical, which was called Winner, and it definitely was in fact a winner. I believe it was a worldwide premiere of the musical, like, so it has not been done before, which was really cool, because they had to not necessarily look at what other people have done in the past, and they did a great job with it, so congrats to them. Workshop, I know that there were a few of us that had attended, it was definitely very beneficial, I won't go too much into it, I did like bring the stuff that I, after I went through and got rid of the stuff I didn't really need to look through, I kept this stuff here, and there's a lot of really good information that we can go through, there's stuff about board docs and diligent and all that, and there were some really good workshops. I actually attended Mr. Weiss's workshop.
I'll vouch for you, you were there.
He and Mr. Bush, they're like a comedy duo, so if you get a chance to go to that, that was fantastic. And then I just, you know, want to say, and like, this is something I think we've, you know, I've been saying, I'm sure, and we've all said at some point, I have to hope at one point, our community can unite and work together, and it's, I'm not, like, Mr. Zeichner said it, and I'll say it about myself, I am not a perfect person, and I'll never say I am, but the more that we can try to work towards the same common goals, the more successful we'll be. You know, I will say this is happening in other towns too, there's a lot of divisiveness on a lot of Board of Eds, you know, I watched some of the meetings, and I guess it's that misery loves company type feeling, I don't know, but, you know, definitely agree, like, as much as we can try to limit our discourse, that would be wonderful, and while, you know, we're here on the Board of Ed, just try to focus on the goals that we have, because we have some really big goals that we want to accomplish, so, you know, hopefully we can all move towards that. Thank you.
Thank you, I know, that's one of your special sayings, and it's great to keep reiterating it. I just want to mention, the duo that you said, Ms. Khan and, what was the other person's name?
Sumaya Samra.
Thank you. I read on Facebook that whatever was left in their chest for running, they donated it to the Ed Foundation, and I think it was over $600.
$637.
And, yeah, and I thought that was wonderful, and I saw that displayed on, there's something good on Facebook, and it was great that they donated their, rest of their money they had to the Ed Foundation, which is a great, great thing. So I wanted to give them a heads up and thank them very much personally for that, for Mr. Ryback, I'm sure Steve appreciates it.
Could I add a comment, Ms. DePain? So, to your point, Mr. Khan, Ms. Samra, and Mrs. Shaw, and the other three candidates, I have to say that Monroe has seen some very difficult Board of Ed elections. This was my favorite year. We had candidates that were running for cause, that were aligned together, were encouraging each other, and it was very heartwarming to see that Board of Ed election. And my gratitude to the other three who were not here, I hope they will continue to try, and hopefully find a seat here. Sometimes when there are so many good choices, it, you know, it does become hard for the community members, but thank you to all of you for running such a student-worthy campaign. Thank you.
Thank you, good comments. Anyone else have any comments, any board members at this point?
Uh, members do.
Oh, yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, so the concern I want to bring up is the idea of Option Two currently offered at Monroe Township High School for seniors, which allows seniors to engage in physical activities outside of school, for example, go to the gym, work out at home, or participate in recreational sports. Instead of taking a designated class of physical education, so they would go outside, not take the gym class, the recent announcement regarding the removal of Option Two has created many concerns throughout the student body, and as their representative, I find it crucial crucial that I share their opinions on this. From what I've received, um, from students regarding, we have a Google form, so they fill out, they can contact me about that, or Siona about that, and even my class president has reached out, saying a lot of students want this to be addressed. So, I feel that the, this Board of Education's looked really deeply into this concern, because by the time students start their physical education block, half of the period is literally gone, so you only have about 45 minutes, and this happens every two days. So I feel like 45 minutes is not a lot of time of physical, physical education in two days. So this raises the question, would it not be beneficial for students to work out at home or go to the gym to participate in physical activity, which they actually want to do? And this is because a student might like want to gain muscle their senior year they're going into college, but I know they could take, um, strength and conditioning, but if they want to do cardio, then it's different. It's like students might want to align their personal goals instead of doing what the gym classes do. So I want the board to deeply consider the, um, opinion which my students have put forward to keep option two in the school district.
So, option two isn't going anywhere?
Staying.
Yeah, as far as, as far as what I've been told, so.
Yeah, no worries.
If you want to touch base with me and see what you've been.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
See, see what you've been, information you've been gathering.
Yeah.
I know we, we have deadlines about engaging in option two.
Yeah.
And when you hit a certain deadline, say it's a marking period deadline, we have to put a cutoff on it, and then we revisit it at a certain times during the year. Maybe there's some confusion about that, but option two is not going anywhere.
It's only for seniors, though.
Yeah, it is only for seniors, yep. Yep, but if you want to touch base, we can, you, you and me, or I can come over, Dr. Higgins, the three of us, whatever, that's fine, but option two is not changing, um, so we just want to maybe get some clarity as to where you guys are hearing information from, and it, I suspect maybe it's one of those cutoffs slash deadlines, so then we can kind of move forward with scheduling the rest of the kids that are here, you know, that aren't doing option two and things, so.
But what you might want to do, though, is let your friends know that you successfully argued for it, and that the board kept it.
Yes, give them a hand, very, very good.
Thank you.
Great student rep.
Yes.
We appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
Um, I just want another comment. We have stu, students back there who are videotaping our meetings, so I want to thank them for volunteering, volunteering their time to come here and videotape our meetings along with our regular IT people. So thank you for your time and volunteering with us. Okay. Um, public forum, public forum, anybody wishing to speak? And please get up and speak at this time.
My name is Vanessa Forrest, Monroe Township. Um, first, I would like to thank everyone who helped me get elected, people who voted for me, a lot of people, you know, just turned out and helped me out a lot and volunteered. It was, it was amazing. It really was. I just want to thank everybody who, you know, helped me in any way, and, okay, so, um, I have been contacted by members of the public that have some questions that I wasn't able to answer, so, um, what is it? Okay, some concerning process, okay. What is the process, or what organization should be contacted, when a member of the school board uses language that a member of the public feels to be vulgar, offensive, or maybe hate speech? How is an ethics complaint filed? Also, what are the consequences of an ethics complaint when it is determined to be valid?
So, unfortunately, that's not information that I can provide to you. Uh, I would suggest that to the extent you have questions about the School Ethics Act, the Code of Ethics for School Board Members, and, um, the jurisdiction and purview of the School Ethics Commission, I would encourage you to look up on the School Ethics Commission, you know, just Google New Jersey School Ethics Commission. They will have, um, a, a lot of information that you'll be able to look through, um, that I think will answer some of the questions that you posed.
So that's the process? You have to go online and?
Uh, I, I would, I would, I would strongly suggest that, um, that you visit that site, because there's going to be a lot of information there that's going to be helpful.
Okay, so they should go to that site and ask. Okay, so then the second was, okay, so what are, um, if, so there, are there consequences if, if it's found to be valid?
Um, I'm going to speak generally, because I'm not.
That's what I'm saying, this is a general.
Uh, yeah, I don't want to address any specific issue.
No, I'm not doing that, I'm asking.
I appreciate that. So, let, let me say this. Generally speaking, the School Ethics Commission is the only body that can, um, I'll call it, make any decisions or judgments with regard to the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics for School Board Members. The School Ethics Act, um, or I should say, the School Ethics Commission is empowered to issue different types of discipline. The discipline that the School Ethics Commission can issue is going from least to greatest, it would be a reprimand, um, a censure, a suspension, and a removal. So those are the, the, the type of remedies that the, or I should say, the type of decisions that the School Ethics Commission can issue. Other than that, uh, you know, to the extent that I, I really don't want to provide public legal advice, so.
No, no, but that's what I'm saying, like they didn't even know, like where to start, like what is the process? That's why I'm asking, generally.
Yeah, I think the place. The place to start would be the, uh, the New Jersey Department of Education's website.
Okay.
There's tons of stuff.
And then, all right, so is it different if there are multiple instances for the same board member?
I really can't, I can't.
But, but it could, it, it's just, yeah, okay, could be, might not be. All right, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
Excuse me again, Bob Valentine Monroe. A question or request, um, with the recent upgrades you've been able to make to the payroll system, I'm curious, each month in the report, you present a staff count, like a body count of everyone in the district. Would it be possible to add a column to that table with the number of full-time equivalents? That'd be far more meaningful from a resource management point of view, because then it could, it converts everybody to a full-time standard. It's much easier to understand resourcing when you have a commonality of basis of measurement. Uh, the number of staff is usually more an HR management tool, whereas FT is more a financial management tool, so I'm hoping maybe you could consider putting that in the packet, it'd be, it'd be helpful. And my second comment would be, um, last year, uh, there's a lot of attention, effort put in to try to give us all a sense of where we were financially in terms of the budget and potential increases next year. Uh, obviously, it's taken on more import with the, with the benefits discussions you're having. I'm just curious if you think you'll be able to give us any kind of preview where we're headed, uh, prior to March. Thank you.
Ms. Allen, did you want it? Dr. Lehman? Dr. Lehman?
Yeah, sure. I mean, we're, we're already in the budget process as we typically are, and, uh, you know, one of the things we're doing is we're moving forward in the budget process with the integration of Full Day K, so, um, you know, health benefits, they just went through an open enrollment, so those numbers will be calculated probably right after the new year, we'll get the, the updated information, because they're also going to go through a, open enrollment in, in the month of December with the change of carriers. So those numbers will start coming together, you know, right after the new year, and, um, you know, that is a huge, huge piece in terms of our financial outlook. Yep.
And one other question, just quickly, um, I kind of touched on it briefly when we went over the budget back in March. I have no doubt that a lot of effort is put in to look at everything and measure and try to find whatever savings could be had. The question I have is, and I don't know what is, is available to you, but trying to look at costs for, for the district compared to other districts in the area, how much we spend on education compared to, say, Manalapan or East Brunswick, or, you know, I don't know what kind of data is available on that, but, you know, over the years, you've, you've talked, and I, I don't challenge you, I know the effort's being put in to do everything possible, but try, and a way of checking that, corroborating that, um, being able to look at some of your neighbors, see how you stack up with them, would provide some additional assurance for yourselves that, you know, from a resource expenditure, expenditure point of view, you're in line.
Yeah, so there is a tool available, um, it's actually a public tool, the Taxpayer Guide for Educations, Educational Spending, and, uh, that is a district, every district in the state is basically measured on a standard tool, so similar categories, similar subcategories. Um, that data, it's usually trailing data.
Right.
So it's not something that's in live or real time. Um, and then, uh, you know, you definitely see variables between districts related to collective bargaining agreements, so staffing costs and things like that, but it's certainly, uh, you know, something that we consider ourselves, you know, when we look at a big picture, um, because, you know, if we're buying, you know, we're buying supplies for certain courses and things, those would be more consistent expenditures that you would see. Uh, but the Taxpayer Guide for Educational Spending subs it out by staffing costs, per people costs, um, it's really a great tool.
Right.
And again, it's, it's usually at least a year behind, unfortunately, but that's just aggregated data in the timeline.
But it'll have every district in New Jersey, so you can, you know, figure out what's an apple and compare it to this apple.
Yeah, because I, I mean, that's just a valuable tool for, if, for all of them for yourselves to say, all right, are we really doing everything we can? How do we stack up? So that's why I wanted to ask that question, that, that's a great tool, and I'll, I'll personally look into a little more, but I'm glad to hear that's something that you're taking into account as you go through the budget. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and questions. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening again, Chrissy Skirby, Monroe Township. I wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting, um, and I know, uh, previous speaker mentioned the doctrine of necessity. Was that invoked again this evening?
Yes.
Could you, um, share what line item that referred to for voting?
Uh, we were discussing personnel litigation and to receive attorney-client advice.
So was it invoked only for that discussion?
Uh, for a discussion related to Dr. Chanley, as it's listed out in the complete resolution that we read into the record.
Okay, so it was only for the discussion, not for voting on any items?
We did not vote in executive session.
Did you vote in the public on any items that you invoked the doctrine of necessity for?
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
No, not, not to my knowledge, there was nothing on the agenda related to Dr. Chanley, from my knowledge.
Okay, and I just want to say, you know, there is so much going on in our district. To sit here and argue with fellow board members is not productive. We heard Ms. Allen say she has no idea how this drastic rise in the premiums is going to affect the budget, but there's no talk about what that's going to mean. You, you sit here and continuously want to fight with each other. The board president's report is to disparage a board member. It, it's really sad, and what you failed to do, Mr. Zeichner, was read the comment publicly posted by Mr. Tofano. And this is what he wrote. Immediately upon learning that a typo in a message I sent to Caro completely changed what I meant to say, I immediately reached out to her directly to explain myself and make it clear that it was an honest mistake. I would never wish something like that on any woman. Anyone who knows me truly knows and understands that without question. To those choosing to twist my words or continue to try to damage my reputation, your opinions hold no weight with me. To Ms. Dagnassus, I am truly sorry if my words caused you any discomfort. That was never my intention, and I deeply regret the misunderstanding, and I apologize. That was posted publicly. You might want to go back and read that as well. When you come here to this board meeting and you sit at that table, your focus should be on the students of this district and our staff, and how you can make a difference in the lives of children, not how you could come here and use your seat as an elected official to continue to disparage people. I really hope that you will take a look at yourself, Mr. Zeichner, and why you're sitting here on the board, because you are here to represent the students and the staff of Monroe Township. You were here to make decisions that impact children's lives, and what you did here tonight was a disgrace. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Someone make a motion to close the meeting this evening?
I'd like to make a motion to close.
Sir, second, Ms. Bora? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Keep standing. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving, everyone, and thank you for always being here.
We have a great Thanksgiving.
Yes.